All right, so good evening. We will call the school committee meeting for Tuesday, May 20, 2025, to order. We'll begin with roll call.
Peter Schwalp.
Lauren Dina, Grace, Aken, Madora, Champagne.
Lisa Sheldon.
Thank you. As the first order of business at our main meeting, we begin with a restructuring and reorganization of the school committee. So I will begin by nominating a nomination for a school committee chair.
I would go ahead and nominate Lisa again. She's done a great job. I'm excited to see, you know, what comes up for second year. It's been a lot of effort, navigation for some of the challenges that we've faced. So I'm happy to nominate Lisa.
We'll take it for a second.
Five seconds.
Any discussion? No? Okay. On there?
Aye.
I will turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I will move to the next order of business, which would be to nominate the vice chairman. Does anyone have any interest in the vice chairman position?
Chairperson. Chairperson. I wouldn't mind trying to take on that role. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any preference or people who want to do it again. This is the third year of my term, potentially the last year, pending obviously elections next year. I wouldn't mind trying to take on a little bit more responsibility, challenges, any, you know, important conversations that might need to involve two school committees.
I'd be happy to continue serving. I mean, I think we discussed at this meeting last year that leadership roles in general should probably rotate more frequently. So I think that I'd certainly be happy to stay on, realistically speaking, understanding that the primary role of the vice chair is to serve as the chair at meetings in the event the chair is absent. I certainly would be that way. So it's, but it's, I think it would be beneficial if, as we discussed last year, leadership had a more rotational schedule similar to what the select board undertakes where it changes here over year because more individuals will be able to participate. That's a more holistic comment.
I do like that, what you said about rotating. I know it's not for, I don't want that formal policy or a written policy.
I think it's just their standard practice where each year it rotates to a different individual, the chair, the vice chair, secretary of position. It has been my experience since I've been in Norfolk with the individual who's in their last year of service, I believe, serving as the chair. So this year Anita is the chair. Last year Jim was the chair. But I don't know that it has to be quite so formulaic either, since certain individuals might not want to be the chair or the vice chair or the secretary. Social calendar organizer. So it's just a thought.
No, yeah, I agree in terms of like, I think that was kind of some of my point last year. And I don't know what, like, obviously we won't have our formal policy, but there's five of us, so it's hard to rotate every year, assuming like one person doesn't run for reelection, but maybe like on a two-year schedule.
I just think because we, and I have served on this committee for a number of years where people did an excellent, amazing job, leading as the chair in consecutive terms. So it's not to say that that isn't something that can be done or something that will be done. It's more just to bring all of us into the conversation around the leadership. Yeah, and I think a call back to the discussion we had last year, which is total sense. So from my standpoint, I'd be happy to serve as the chair again. I don't know, vice chair, sorry, but vice chair again, probably not quite as interested in serving as the chair again. But I think some rotation in leadership could be beneficial.
So would we want to start rotating now and kind of, I don't know if we need a formal policy, but maybe have a discussion at some point to say, this is tradition or this is typically what we do?
Yes, I think it's more just having an open conversation so motions aren't made out of habit. And so with which, with respect to the vice chair role, I don't even know that it's necessarily applicable. It's just a comment as I don't think we have a motion pending. So I believe it's your motion to make as the chair to nominate a vice chair. Am I incorrect in that, Ingrid?
I think it must something else to do. I think to solicit a nomination for a vice chair, but we don't have a motion currently on the table, so.
I'd be looking for a nomination for vice chair.
I will nominate Lauren for vice chair.
Also.
Any further questions on that? Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lauren. This isn't saying that in the future, if I like run for reelection and I'm successful, that I want to take on the chairship. It's.
No, but I don't think we have a no-backs policy.
No, but if we're talking about like some sort of, not a formal policy, but kind of like a discussional policy, like would the vice chair kind of, like, I think it's good for, like you said, as we rotate, maybe somebody different either filling in the chair every two or so many years and then the vice chair in terms of just like getting the experience because maybe they could take on the chair role in the future. Again, not saying that, because I've seen Lisa has so much work on her plate with that. That's not something I'm ready to take on at all.
And I don't think there's an expect, let me, I'm counting backwards and I can count two or three different vice chairs who never served as chair. I mean, it was Paul and Jen and, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, it doesn't set you up.
No, no, I know that. I'm saying like, in, again, the next year, we rotate that position more frequently than the chair because the chair takes a lot of experience or not necessarily experience, but it takes more work. There's less people probably who want to take on the chair role than, but.
Yeah, but you get those great emails from people saying you're doing a wonderful job.
Much appreciated.
All right, we will now be looking to nominate a secretary, KP representative, and legislative liaison. So those are actually three different roles, but looking at the past several years, one person has always taken on those three responsibilities, which makes sense because altogether it's a lot of work, but the secretary itself is basically for anyone interested, just recording executive sessions where Ingrid and Adrian may not be in attendance or recording the minutes if Adrian isn't able to make it. The legislative liaison is our liaison to MASC and just keeping the committee informed about legislative issues that are going on from them. And then the King Philip representatives represents the Norfolk School Committee, the King Philip School Committee, and they report back to Norfolk and they are a voting member on Philip. So.
And that is bi-weekly?
Bi-weekly.
Five months.
Five months.
Yeah, so it's not bi-weekly.
It's Monday nights typically every other Monday night.
Every other Monday night, I guess. I served as this position last year. It was really interesting being on another school committee at the same time, seeing how both operate, learn a lot from being on too. Is anyone interested in taking on that? KP meals really wants to.
Well, I actually would be interested, just given my oldest will be moving up to KP and as a KP alum, I would be really interested to see what is actually happening now versus what I assume happened because it's 100 years ago. So I would be willing to do that unless someone else feels strongly.
It sounds profound that you're willing to.
That's a good reason. I know. Me too. I try.
Big deal.
Like that someone with a child in that school system should have first tips.
True.
First tips on two more.
Yeah. It's great, you learn a lot about being on too.
That's why I said it was Lisa because I didn't think anybody else would volunteer.
I'm still looking for official nomination.
I will nominate Grace for KP representative, secretary, legislative liaison.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congrats, Grace. It's a good time. It's a good time.
This has been a learning experience. I'm sure that will be too.
Yeah, you'll get to see the ins and outs of.
Meet some people from other towns. That'll be fun.
Yes, the next motion is to nominate a recording secretary. Adrian has done a phenomenal job for the past several years. I'd love to see you continue if you would like to.
Sure.
I agree. For recording secretary.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
If she's with him.
I am. Thank you.
So next, we have to fill the remaining subcommittees, which will be interesting this year. So we have budget and we have policy. Then we need a teachers negotiating team and a paraprofessionals negotiating team. And then we also need to talk about the building committee and the stats of that and whether it's going to be a subcommittee. I did want to point out for budget and policy, the Governor Healy extended the hybrid and remote meeting allowance to 2027. So because we have all these subcommittees that are taking people's time and everyone is very busy, just throwing it out there that if it did lighten the load on some people that we could do, but that we can't do negotiations virtually, but you could do budget and policy potentially virtually either, you know, on a lunch hour or another time at night. So you don't have to leave home if that helps at all. Just throwing that out there.
And we have not yet received requests from the NTA to open negotiations on six best contract. Their contract does expire in June next year. Typically, we receive that around November, December, but we have received notification and the Department of Labor has appointed NTA as the negotiating body for the paraprofessionals. We also haven't received a request yet to begin bargaining. The time commitment for those in the past is pretty intense. When we did the teacher negotiations, we began in January, this meeting from January through June, typically every other week for about two hours in the evening. The pairs, this would be the first contract, so we aren't modifying. We're actually creating all the language and all the terms. So I do expect this to be a significant commitment. So we just wanted to make sure people understood that before you sign up for other subcommittees. Budget, we know it's going to probably be a tricky budget year, so the time commitment for that could be significant as well. Policy, we have been able to, our policies are currently all compliant with the regulations, but the, there tends to be slightly less of a commitment than others. So just wanted to make sure everybody knew it was on the table before we.
When is the para approximate? Is it during that same January through June timeframe?
I don't know. I would expect that they will request to open bargaining earlier. In some places, the request is sent to coalition bargaining or to bargain both agencies together. I, we haven't received a request for the committee to respond to it this time. I would guess that it would be earlier in the school year, but I'm not positive. They may decide to, they want to try to, to bargain collectively with the teachers. I just, we haven't, we haven't received any indication of what their, what they, timeline they would prefer would look like.
And how many school committee members support that?
So the, well, the negotiations, it would be two school committee members because for both groups, both the pairs and the school committee, they are negotiating with the school committee. So the bargaining agreement is between the school committee and the agents.
Do you want to talk about your response?
Well, you're the primary representative that is at the negotiating table. Historically, I mean, with COVID, maybe three rounds.
I think three.
Yes. Historically, it would involve two school committee members, Ingrid, obviously. I think in the last round of negotiations, we incorporated Justin.
Yeah, actually a representative from the town who attends some of the meetings.
And then obviously outside council. Should have said Andy first. But, you know, and I think it's, it is a time commitment. It's very important. I think it's an extraordinarily important role for school committee members to hold. I have had the privilege of doing it on a few occasions. My personal perspective, I, this will most likely be my last term on the school committee because at the end of June, I will move our children to the school system. So, you know, it might be time to move on. So whether or not personally I would be available to be on the teachers negotiating team this year, starting in January, that time commitment might be too much for me. I'd be happy to, you know, support whoever is going to be part of that process. And if we are negotiating separately with paraprofessionals earlier in the year, I might be able to participate in that so that, you know, we're in a deficit because no one else on the school committee has participated in this previously.
Good. A question about the professional. If they choose to bargain collectively with the teachers and we nominate people to be on those committees with the negotiation for them, would that just get canceled and the two that are on the teachers?
Well, what I suggest for this meeting is to fill the budget and policy with a lens to what else you might be volunteering for.
Okay.
I don't think we need to establish the negotiation committees tonight because we haven't received that bargaining. I just don't want somebody to sign up for budget that may have to serve on a negotiating committee if that's going to tap your time availability. So we wanted you to be aware these two requests will be coming and what the time commitment involved would need to, so that people can think about what committees are manageable.
Yeah, and how flexible they are with like nights and stuff because again, it depends on.
Usually the way the negotiation committees work, we have an initial meeting that we agree on a common time and at that meeting, we establish guidelines and we typically schedule out the next three meetings. So if the dates and times change, we can't necessarily pick one consistent night because the representative that's supporting the NTA is often negotiating multiple contracts. So they're not always available on the same night, but we do as a courtesy try to book out at least the next two, sometimes three meetings so that we can all plan our schedules accordingly.
Okay.
And I mean, just for the sake of information, I think the last round of negotiations we had, I was serving on the budget subcommittee at that point. And it was, it was a different budget climate. Well, not that different. But it was tough. We thought it was a budget climate until recently, but it was, you know, for me personally manageable. Definitely I didn't miss a couple softball games, but it is what it is.
Three, four innings, huh?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, it was, it's a time commitment. I think it's really valuable and important work, so I would encourage everyone to give it some consideration. It's a great learning experience and I think it can inform your understanding of the role of the school committee and the role of the amazing teachers that we have as you move forward, so.
And I think it too, hopefully it adds flexibility with, you know, if someone signs up for budget or someone signs up for policy and then they join a committee.
We could consider.
We could go virtual just to alleviate that time constraint. But if I understand correctly, if they decide to bargain collectively, it would go down to just two people.
Well, it would be up to the committee. They can request you have to decide if you want to report with coalition bargaining. So we would have to work that out.
Gotcha.
But you would, you can only have two members of the school committee on the bargain because you can't have a four. You have two members you elect to bargain on the faith on behalf of the committee, whatever the final agreement is that is reached, come back to the full committee for a vote and a application. So if we move forward to coalition bargaining, it would only be two people. My question was that they, that we would likely be bargaining separately, but I just don't know because we haven't received a formal request yet.
With that information, I'm happy to serve on a negotiating committee and can also do one of the subcommittees, but I'm happy to hear if anyone has specific interests they want to fill.
I'd love to stay on budget. I'm not sure if anybody wants to take that from you, but I mean. Oh no, it's not going to be a good year. I've just been on it the past two years. So I feel like we went over a lot of information the past two years. There were more detail than is kind of presented at the full meeting. So I'm hoping that knowledge of the past two years can be helpful in determining where we go this year.
Sure. I'd be happy to be on budget as well if we wanted to move things around, having done it in other strange years. Perhaps that would be helpful, but you know.
Yeah, your knowledge from years ago and that's what we were kind of looking at this year, just trying to compare historical.
Well, it'll be interesting. I mean, we'll be working with a different structure within the town as well, so be interested to see.
Grace, being on KP, I did not serve on. If you think you're good.
My cup runs out, so.
That is a lot of time.
Yes. Would you like to do policy?
Yeah, I could swap Madora on policy and then we can figure out negotiating there when we cross that bridge.
Yeah.
But you said generally expect six months, two times a month?
It depends. It's been very different. Our last round of negotiations began in January and finished in June, so it was about six months. And it was about two meetings a month for two hours. A little bit, I think we had a couple of extra meetings towards the end. I think, I don't know the exact number, but we had a couple of shorter meetings at the end. There's been other years that it took four meetings and we were done. So really, it just depends on the number of issues that we are negotiating on.
Okay. So yeah, I can have an open mind around that. When we figure out what it looks like, we can talk about that.
So we have Mora and Madora on budget, Peter and myself on policy. And then what is the status of the building committee? Are we still, are you still meeting? Is it?
The building committee right now, so as of right now, the building committee is not meeting. We talked about putting together a community working group to explore options. However, that's on hold because we did apply for MSBA funding. If we receive MSBA funding, a requirement is to appoint a building committee. So I don't think it makes sense to establish a working group and then have to appoint a committee if we receive funding. So I think that's on hold and I think we should hear from MSBA probably in July. If they do not move forward, then I think the attempt is to think about a working group to continue the work that's been started and go from there. If we are, if we are approved, then we would need to appoint a full building committee to oversee the MSBA.
So because the existing building committee hasn't disbanded, I think you could use that as a start.
That's right.
Assuming.
Yeah, we're just not meeting.
Yeah. We still exist. There's no money, there's no projects. There's nothing to talk about.
No choices to make.
Yeah.
So we might have additional committees that we can fill.
Okay. So that's kind of been a holding pattern until we get one.
Until we have MSBA.
Okay.
And if we, I would say if we are inviting you to MSBA, it would be for an expanded feasibility because we would have to go back to the feasibility. It can't pick up where we left off because MSBA would require additional feasibility work to be done. So the time commitment probably won't be as much as if we were in the building case.
Okay. So that's on hold. All right, moving on to public comment. Anyone wish to speak tonight? Okay, correspondence, we have none. School committee chair report, just welcoming the original gang back together. And then we'll move on to gift fund. We are lucky again to receive some amazing gifts this month. $800 from the Norfolk PTO for chorus siphon for Freeman, $3,000 from the Norfolk PTO for Camp Burgess, $1,039.20 from the Norfolk PTO for box session two, which my kids are doing again. It's the forest school gym program and kids love it. And then the Friends of CPAC, $1,000 for the Unified School Field Day at both HOD and Freeman Kennedy. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the gifts as listed. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the PTO and the CPAC.
Thank you to the PTO for the, I had the pleasure of going to Camp Burgess and let me tell you, it was great compared to where they used to go. Wonderful time. Got scholarship money coming in. It was awesome.
I think I did your password.
All right. Sorry.
Was it just the one night?
It was one night.
They did because we changed venues so they could only secure the one night.
I didn't even check it.
You have to stay away.
You know, I slept on bunk beds.
It was nice bunk bed.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so we wanted to start the, the meeting tonight was sharing some student performance. So this is the FK Advanced Band at the MICA competition and MICA is the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association. Their goal is to encourage and support high performance standards by high school, middle school, and elementary school music organizations. And the MICA Concert Festival encourages the improvement of an ensemble's musical standards by providing musical adjudication by highly qualified adjudicators. Attendance at the festival also affords organizations an opportunity to hear performances by other groups and to experience the presentation of a wide variety of musical literature. Participating groups are evaluated on the merit of their performance and awards are presented based on a medal system. Groups achieving a score in the highest rating bracket receive a gold medal. Groups in the second bracket receive silver medal. Groups in the third bracket receive a bronze and groups in the fourth bracket receive a medal of merit. Groups in the final bracket receive a festival, a certificate of festival participation. Freeman Kennedy and the Freeman Centennial Advanced Bands has participated in total of 16 MICA concert festivals and the bands have annually received awards in 2003, four, and eight. They won the silver medal in 2009, 10, 11, and since they have been winning the gold. So this is a snapshot of part of the advanced band performance at MICA. So we just wanted to share that. I think we're very proud of our FK band students. They do a fantastic job and Mr. Enfori here, our band. I don't know if you want to share it, but we just wanted to share that with the community.
Once again, thank you guys. We've been extremely lucky here for a number of years to have the school committee, Dr. Alatry and the administration and my peers who give their time to let the kids come down for lessons and sectionals and stuff like that. We were really fortunate to have everything we have, so thank you.
And we're lucky because our offices are located right in CPAC, so we get to be right there all the time, which is really fun.
If I could quickly just say that percussion session of the section sounded particularly amazing.
Amazing cymbal.
It was a wash though.
Yeah, if you look at his arms, good muscles.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I just have an update on Baystate Shelter. So as everybody is aware, the Baystate Shelter will be closing at the end of July, July 31st. We have currently 27 students enrolled in the shelter. That's about half of what we had when I reported at the March meeting. It's been declining ever since then. We have had no students enroll in the last month at all. We've only had about five students total since March and we have had quite a few students up there as you can see. So we have 27 students remaining. We will be working with the shelter collaboratively, close out and supporting families like this transition. It is my understanding that most families will have left by then and then any remaining families that are still there in July will be relocated to the newly opening shelter in, emergency shelter in Lowell. So that's the information that we have. I know it was on the news last night, so much families have heard that. And we're just continuing to work with the shelter.
Okay. Sure. So a majority of these students probably have the option to stay within our district. I know it's extremely rare. Is there like a cutoff time that they have to make that decision by that we would know?
So it's, it's a little bit nuanced in that. So families that have. So families that have left the shelter that are in permanent housing or apartments only have the right to return to the school of origin, which would be Norfolk, to the end of the year in which they become permanently housed. So most families that have left the district that are in permanent, are in apartments throughout the state of Massachusetts, they have McKinney-Bentle rights to return to Norfolk only through the end of the school year, because that's the year they become permanently housed.
But it was until there was like a specific transition, like?
No, until the end of the school year where they become housed. However, if there are families that are remaining in the shelter that are relocated to another area in Lowell and they're still in the shelter system, they potentially could have rights to return. That said, it's often not in the best interest of the child when you're talking about a commute that's over an hour both ways. And so we've worked with families around that. Most families, I think it's unlikely that we would have many families returning.
Is there a specific date that they have to make that known by, just in terms of like?
They would have to be enrolled. No, not, there isn't, they would have to be enrolled somewhere. So if they weren't enrolled in September, we would have to follow up because we have an obligation to make sure students are enrolled.
Okay.
So if we don't receive a records request, we would have to reach out and clarify enrollment. But as I said, most of the students that have exited have exited to apartments at this point.
Okay. I know it's not closed yet, but we're looking there. I just wanted to say thank you to you, administrative team. Thank you so much to all our teachers. This was a tremendous undertaking. Everyone came together. Everyone looked really, really hard, and it's recognized. So thank you to teachers.
Yeah, it was a big, it was a big transition, and as you said, our teachers did an excellent job. We have a social worker that supported transitions. I think we learned a lot. And, you know, I think as we work towards closeout, there's certainly takeaways and things that we learned. And for many students that came here, they received a great education while they were here, and we worked hard to make sure that we were meeting the needs of our current students and allowing everybody to access the education they needed. So it was a challenging year, but I think we are edging on good note.
I'll say that.
Thank you. Next, BICO Board of Appointments. So anyone in the school committee is required to appoint somebody to serve on the BICO Board. It can be a superintendent or a school committee member. The BICO Collaborative, we are part of, there's about seventeen member districts. Through the Collaborative, they provide specialized programming, generally housed in public schools. We have a few sites that are private. And provides programming at a discounted rate to member districts for students that you may not be able to provide appropriate program within districts. Currently, the Board is all superintendents. They meet at nine o'clock on Thursdays. Usually the first or second Thursday of the month. I'm happy to serve on the Board. I've been on the Board since 2012. I was the chair of the Board for a few years. So happy to continue to serve if you would like me to. If a member is interested in serving on the BICO Board, you can consider that. So put that out to you.
I would be looking for a motion to nominate Dr. Alardi, to appoint Dr. Alardi as a BICO Board representative.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye. The next item in the packet, we are going to postpone till the June meeting. There's an error in the document, but we are looking at trying to adjust our service salary schedules. So I'm going to have to get this corrected and bring it back to the June meeting. Apologize for that. Next in the packet, we have Marion Goodman, who's been serving as our business consultant. As you know, we do not have a full-time business manager. We have a consultant one day a week, and then we have a business office specialist that does the day operations warrant, kind of business office invoicing and accounts payable. Ms. Goodman's been in Lowell for two years. She also jumped in and helped KP this year, so she serves hard to support them in closeout and sell a gap that they have. I think she's very diligent. She has, I think she's done a great job. I would recommend that we reappoint her. The salary quota that the school committee threw for people that are not on the salary matrix was 3.25. I think we should put the same quota in place for Marion for her successor contract. So my recommendation would be that we appoint Marion with the 3.25 quota. And you can see the agreement on the back.
Looking for a motion to approve Marion, the term stated. I'm sorry.
I move to appoint Marion Goodman for a successor contract as the school's business consultant.
Any further discussions? All of us in favor?
Aye. Next thing in the packet is the school nurse. Per the last general laws, the school committee is required to appoint certain positions. That would be the director of special education, the superintendent, the school business manager, which we just appointed, school physician and school nurses. Our two school nurses, Julia LaVoy, the full-time nurse at Freeman Kennedy, and Kathy Steck, has been a part-time nurse at the H. L. Day. Anne Hurley retired and has come back and was supporting the transition and onboarding a new nurse. But she will be early retiring, we can't anticipate her. So I'm recommending that we hire Kathy Steck full-time. She's done a great job for us. The nurses, as we talked about earlier when we talked about budget, their salaries were not competitive with the market. And so we are recommending a market adjustment. The budget section makes a good look at this. This is built into the budget proposal for next year to make their salaries more competitive with our regional counterparts in my company bill. So we are recommending for both nurses who have similar backgrounds and experiences, a salary of seventy-two thousand five hundred for next year. Additionally, adding funding, fifteen hundred annually for professional development, and two hundred for the purchase of scrubs and office attire, if you would say. So that said, the rest of the contract remains the same. Those are the key terms that I'm recommending changing. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Julia LaVoy full-time to the Freeman Kennedy with the contract and terms as spelled out. And then another motion to appoint Kathy Steck as the H. L. Day nurse with the term and position outlined in the contract.
Move to appoint Mrs. Julia LaVoy as a full-time nurse at the Freeman Kennedy School pursuant to the terms identified in the contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
And move to appoint Mrs. Kathy Steck as the full-time nurse at the H. L. Day School pursuant to the terms in the contract. Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you to Anne Hurley.
Yes, thank you.
This is Hurley.
All those in favor?
Aye. Next is the school physician. So you're getting all your appointments done in one meeting. We have worked with Dr. D'Angelo for a number of years. The nurses really like him. He's very responsive when they have questions or need support. And they would like to continue working with him. He may reach out, and he is willing to do that for another year. The stipend has not changed. He hasn't increased that for a couple of years now. It's a two thousand dollar stipend. So I am recommending that we continue to work with Dr. Henry D'Angelo as the school physician.
I will move to reappoint Dr. Henry D'Angelo as the school physician. Second. Any further discussion?
I was just curious, where is Dr. D'Angelo located?
Local.
Local?
Yeah.
The doctor doesn't come on-site, right?
He does a lot of telehealth. If we have a child that doesn't have a physician and they need support with physicals, things like that, he would support that. Consult with us on healthcare plans. If a child is entering the district and needs a healthcare plan, he would review that and support our nurses, anything like that. So it's generally telehealth that he has done some on-site training or they have gone to his office for meetings at times.
Yeah, yeah, and he's local, okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, the last thing I have is just a draft calendar for next year. Typically, we meet a little bit later in August, so that we can give an opening school report. This is just a draft calendar. The committee wants to keep meetings on Tuesday nights, and it also reflects that the May meeting is usually a week later following the elections. And town meeting, no meeting in July. So this is just basically the meeting schedule that we've had this year imposed on next year's calendar for discussion. If that still works, we can keep it. If it doesn't, and you want to consider a different time of the week or anything like that, we can have that discussion as well.
I do know, so I put better this way.
Yeah, we'll have to select a different night of November.
Is Tuesday still work for them?
Yeah.
Should we just pick the November date now?
We can.
When nobody else is. Can I say not the eighteenth?
I'll say not the fourteenth, Friday.
How about the fourth?
Or the twelfth, or the thirteenth, or the tenth?
Yeah. You wanted to keep it that way.
Do you want to? Cut that to tenth?
Sure.
And then to tenth, my birthday, if you want the twelfth.
Well, the eighteenth is my anniversary, so.
We don't have to do that.
It doesn't have a tenth of grace, so we still have a quorum.
But the second's for you. It's KP, but.
But we would have fourth or three.
Yeah, you can have four or.
Okay.
You can have the seventeenth, but that's better.
I make an observation. November eleventh is a holiday?
That's why we're changing it. Changing how we're telling.
Fourth is okay.
Fourth is fine for me. And then when we look at calendars?
Let's do fourth.
All our birthdays at the fourth.
That is a PD day now. That's okay. Okay, yeah. Perfect. So let's go with that fourth. And that's all I have for you tonight.
On the topic of the calendar, so KP does the retreat before the beginning of the school year.
I didn't know that when I saw you.
It's a half-day, afternoon, get lunch.
Okay, okay, fine, I'll go back.
They look at their strategic plan. They kind of set some, they align with each other. They set some school committee goals that they're interested in achieving for the year. It's actually a really fun morning or afternoon. Was wondering if people had interest in doing that someday this summer.
I think it'd be good for us to. I don't know that I could commit to doing it during a workday, but if we wanted to do like a late afternoon evening thing, I think we could accommodate that.
We could do that too.
Yeah, that sounds.
It doesn't have to be a full half-day.
We could just have snacks too. The budget's tight.
Okay, I would send out some, we can talk and look at availability and lots of that. We have a little Google, do you always put dates to you? Do you like?
The only thing I will say, I'm just glad that last week in August, I guess it's not the last week in August, but the last week in August before school starts, I would be away. So I just want to make sure that there isn't other conflicts. That's our vacation.
I'll be here.
You will be here.
I'll be back on the Fourth of August and here.
So then that date should be fine. I just want to.
Have their vacation.
Wait, don't look at. I think we're visiting family again, so I should.
Although we strike that, don't worry.
Yes, they are.
Moving to committee reports. And in committee reports, I noticed that we did not discuss liaisons, so we can do that quickly. Does Policy Subcommittee have anything to report?
No, there's no. We just have a Policy Subcommittee.
Our former Budget Subcommittee.
Budget Council.
Moving at the town meeting, so Building Committee we talked about. King Philip, it was a very, very short meeting last time we met, so I really have no report from them.
The KP?
No, it'll be G9. And then, does anyone have any liaison updates?
I did have a couple of dates for Lions that they just wanted to share on any available place, including school committee, of their upcoming events. The annual Field of Flags event for Memorial Day. And that supports the Fisher House of Boston and veteran families undergoing medical treatment in Boston. That's going on now with the ceremony on Town Hill on Saturday at ten. If you go to the Norfolk Lions, they have all the information on Field of Flags and the ceremony, and also how to benefit Fisher House. And then the Community Day event, which is the kind of early summer kickoff on the Holmes Bus Complex, and that's planned for Saturday, June 14th, from nine to, I mean, eleven to four. And that information's also on the Norfolk Lions website. So Jack said if you could just elevate those up for the next meeting, we appreciate it.
And then very much so that night, right? At Freeman Kennedy?
I think so. I think so, yeah. I didn't know that was annual now.
So.
That's one of my favorites.
Donna, is it annual now?
Yes. Fireworks, Marion Progo's favorite event to run, and she is retiring this year.
She's going out with a bang.
Sorry.
She has a free egg.
It's been a long day.
You're welcome.
Any other ideas on updates?
No, our school community lead, most of their events are done for the year. Have some updates for you over the summer. What's to happen next?
For me, PTO had a great teacher appreciation week, and the teacher appreciation luncheon will be this week. Casino Royale exceeded its funding goals, and they'll be funding a sensory walk for HOD. Sixth grade had a successful dance, and, not successful. And they're looking forward to field days and promotion ceremony. And there have been a number of grade-specific curriculum enhancements, as well as an assembly at HOD that was funded by the PTO. They did want to fly out their ongoing concern about increasing strain on the library, which I know we all know and feel, and we've heard from other public comment as well. But they wanted to bring that to our attention, that they're also doing this. And they do provide volunteer coverage, but the amount being placed on them, it feels unmanageable, so.
How do we facilitate that? Are there like emails that are sent out to solicit volunteers? Or do you have to be kind of like certified to be a volunteer in the library?
No, it's, they really, they're starting to provide training and support with you shoving books and helping kids check books out. They have some volunteers that do that work.
I guess maybe I haven't read through the PTO. I haven't seen any like specific emails from them requesting that, so I don't know if there's a good way to. If I can follow up with that. I'd love to see more support than that too. I know it's a problem on their side, so.
Yeah. And then, does anyone want to meet a named school partner this year and switch it up? Do you want to keep your same school partner? Any take or thoughts?
So I have not been able to give my all to CPAC just because of all the other juggling I'm doing in my life. So and I know, I want to make sure they get the attention that they need. So I'm happy to have somebody else who has maybe a little more bandwidth take that on. But I know they were requesting like a monthly call before every meeting, and I just wasn't able to get that done before the meeting.
Okay, yeah, that was one of the heavier ones, so that makes sense. Does anyone else have any thoughts on?
I'm happy with mine.
Nobody, anybody with a take?
I'm happy with mine. I'd also, well, I was going to say I'd be happy to move to the PTO. I don't know if that is odd since I won't be a member of the PTO anymore next year. It's all becoming very real. So, yeah, I'd be happy to switch to the PTO if that gives somebody, consider PTO this year, right?
Right.
If you want to stay on CPAC, yeah. And I could do PTO if that's.
Either way.
Okay, then I'll stay.
So I could switch to PTO.
Yeah, I mean, REC is very adept at their own publicity, and.
Then maybe I'll take REC.
We rec in the King Philip Music Association, so I feel like there's some crossover there for you.
Okay.
What did I just sign up for? I'm PTO now?
PCP Music and REC.
Perfect.
Is that right?
Yep. Sign me up for library hours.
Okay, perfect. We need to vote on the April eighth minutes. Got a chance to review those. Does anyone have any comments on them? Looking to for a motion to approve the April eighth school committee minutes. So moved?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And our next school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th.